Well, I don't think Joseph was gonna make it. If he does, well, I'll be surprised. He's out of town. There's Mike. I just texted Reese.
What are we waiting for, Dave?
I just text you.
What's that?
I just text you to see if you were available.
Oh, yeah, I've been on.
Oh, have you? Okay.
I guess that I didn't show up for some reason.
Yeah, I didn't. Travis, have you seen, uh, Reese?
No, I do not see her.
I just texted her, so let's give her a minute or two.
I suggest we get started.
I will give it a minute or two more in case something came up that she couldn't join at this time.
I'd like that consideration too, Dave, when I'm a couple minutes late.
Well, it's, we waited for you.
No, you haven't. No, it started. You can look in here, but, I mean, I've come in with the pledge of allegiance going on.
Okay, Travis, we do have a quorum. It's six oh five. Regular meeting of the Windsor Heights City Council called the order. Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Here.
Joseph Jones. Mike LaFredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Here.
And Teresa Harms.
Okay. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Motion to approve.
No.
Any discussion on it? Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Mike LaFredo.
Yes.
And Mike Jones.
Yes.
Next item is public forum. Time made for comments from the public other than what's on the agenda. Uh, no action will be taken on the comments. Please announce yourself or state your name and address and try and keep ourselves under five minutes. We got any, uh, one who'd like to comment?
Hi, it's Dee Dee Beckerman with the Windsor Heights Chamber. Just want to give a quick update. We have two ribbon cuttings this week that I would love to see everyone at if they are able to. Jake's Fireworks is this Friday at ten AM. This Friday at ten AM is Jake's Fireworks ribbon cutting, and then this Thursday is Dinner Dispatch. And Dinner Dispatch's ribbon cutting is at four PM.
Same day?
Thursday is Dinner Dispatch, Friday is Jake's Fireworks.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other folks from the public?
Uh, hi, Lauren Campbell, one thousand four sixty-third street. Um, I wanted to share with you guys the route for the parade. Um, I had the opportunity to meet with Chief McCleskey and Dalton from Public Works to discuss a strategy that would meet the needs of residents and keep everybody safe and, um, given the, while the construction on university is complete, um, I know I don't want my toddler standing in a bunch of mud as he dives for candy and puts the candy into his mouth. So, uh, this year we are doing a special parade route. Um, uh, we've announced this on the parade, uh, Facebook page. The chamber will share it, the city will share it, et cetera, et cetera. But the parade route will actually go down Seventieth Street this year and sort of seventy-third. It will take Seventieth all the way down to university where it will head east and then turn south on Sixty-eighth down to School Street and then end at, uh, at the park, going through the exit at Walmart, just as we have in previous years. So, this is a change for residents. So, um, I, uh, will be reaching out to, uh, Whitney and Dennis on, uh, the strategy for getting that information in as many people's hands as possible, including some signs. The parade lineup is going to be on Wilshire. Uh, Mayor Burgess, as well as the resident, uh, Stacy Clough and Peter Wall have offered to let us put signs in their yard notifying neighbors. We also have volunteers that will be walking Wilshire, uh, and leaving flyer with the information about the expected traffic on the third on Wilshire Boulevard. But otherwise, uh, we can expect the same great fun from the Windsor Heights Parade. And then, of course, music starts at six o'clock and fireworks start exactly at nine forty, not one moment later. So, as you see this on the city's Facebook page and on the, uh, parade's Facebook page, I hope that you share the message out and continue to share it because the last thing we want to do is to leave any families disappointed as they line up on the normal parade route for this year. So, um, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Lauren? I'm sure there will be, so stand by.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren.
And thanks for sharing that, Travis. I appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem. Any other folks from the, uh, audience that would like to make comments?
Shelley has her hand up, Mayor.
Okay, I.
Shelley Suster. Shelley Suster, sixty-five twenty Forest Court. I spoke at last council meeting about property damage and safety concerns during the detour along Forest Court. I'd like to know what will be done differently in the future regarding communication from the city with Windsor Heights residents. Will Public Works consider communicating with residents beforehand and giving us a heads up on what we could expect? Uh, will they consider moving or raising low hanging lines to prevent disruption in service in our homes? Uh, will additional signs be available to put up? For example, keeping semis out of a residential street with no sidewalks. And also, I'm still waiting for a response from Mr. Durham and Mr. Jacobus. I've brought these questions up multiple times after Mr. Jacobus told me that city code specifies that bicyclists need to be riding twelve feet into people's front yards if there are no sidewalks. I would like one of those two to provide the city code that I can reference. And, uh, once I see that in code, I'd like to know how, uh, it is ADA accessible. Thank you.
I'm sure we will address those at a very near time in the future. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Next item on the agenda is the consult consent agenda.
Hold on, I'm sorry, Dave. Is someone going to just email her? That's the very least we can do.
I'll let, uh, Dennis and Dalton handle that in a combined letter to her.
Thank you.
I'll handle that, Mr. Jones, but we have exchanged considerable number of emails.
And I understand.
And I also asked that question in my latest email. Um, I do really want clarification on the city code.
Available online.
It's also not very user friendly. So, I would appreciate it if people are telling me that there's a code. I would really like to be able to, I mean, I have four kids. I would like the code pointed out directly. And, um, so I can know what to reference in the future.
I think we can handle that. Thank you.
Yes, it can be done.
Okay, motion to approve the consent agenda.
Some of them.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Can we just pull out, um, or just talk about E, the purchase agreement with Casey's? I know that I have heard a lot of questions about it from residents. And I just want to be kind of transparent about what's going on and that it's not the city dragging their feet in any way, shape, or form, uh, with this project.
We can remove item E. And address it immediately following. Item I. Motion would to go ahead without item E.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Mike LaFredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa, is that you that just popped on?
It is, yes, please. Sorry for my tardiness.
Thank you. Okay, roll call. We just do that?
No, now it's time to discuss item E.
Okay. Dennis, you want to take over and let's see, we got to do a roll call on this, the, this without item E first, right?
All right, we just did that, Mayor.
Okay, then, uh, item E, which is approved, second addendum to the purchase agreement to Casey's. Dennis, would you like to update council on that?
You're muted, Dennis.
Dennis.
Okay, the, uh, the staff has been working with Casey's and their, um, design architect to, uh, put together the site plan and review the site plan that's been submitted. Um, there are a couple issues that are sticking points. One, of course, is the left turn lane that is being required by ODOT, uh, DOT to, um, allow for entrance into the sixty-third street entrance in and out for what Casey's proposing. And, um, they do not want to actually do that because that would require them to, uh, acquire more property. And then they would also have to configure their, um, their entrance on that at sixty-third, uh, for in and out. So, that work has been going on for a while now. They are not going to have that final site plan done and that issue for, of one of some answered before the expiration of this purchase agreement, which is actually, I think it expired on the seventeenth, so they're asking for a second extension on the purchase agreement.
Dennis, so the disagreement is the recommendation came from DOT on how to enter from, from sixty-third, right?
Yes, the site plan review has required that Casey's, um, build that left turn lane. They do not want to do that, and that's where we are at disagreement.
Okay. So, is you're going, in the, in the original site plan, is, is it, can people still get out on sixty-third?
Um, yes, Mike. Casey's is currently looking at alternatives that they think might be viable. Uh, one would be making the sixty-third street entrance an in and out only, so you could go right out and right in, and then they would extend the median in the middle of sixty-third so that you could not do a left-hand turn out of Casey's at that point. That's one thing that they're looking at, but that's going to also impact the university ave entrance that's planned there as it will probably shift more in and out traffic over on the university, which may exceed, um, which may not be possible. So, Casey's is going back and they're looking at that now, and they're going to bring back what they find out to us, and we'll see how we proceed from there.
Okay, thank you.
Any further comments or discussion on that item?
So, it shows that, um, the next time that we will be either revisiting this and extending or revisiting or whatever would be August seventeenth, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Anything further?
Thank you for explaining for everyone out there.
Okay, motion to approve, read the item E down to item J.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Mike LaFredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Thank you. Next item in new business consideration resolution twenty twenty-one twenty-nine, setting the non-union pay ranges. Motion to approve.
Some of them.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I do. I, I've got it, uh, some discussion about it because I certainly don't want to, uh, handcuff in any way future councils, and I don't think we can predict the future. And so, I, I, I think it, uh, as most cities do, it's a negotiated item and it's redone every year. I understand what, what is proposed, and I think those are good indices to look at. Uh, Consumer Price Index is one, and, and the Economic Index is another one. But I don't think I would approve anything that's automatic.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Um, the council at your last meeting, they did approve the and adopt the, uh, compensation and performance evaluation program, which in that program that was approved calls for this to be updated every two years and brought to the council. And that was actually taken right out of the PON effects recommendation. We're drawing that two-year period out from them.
Correct, I know that. So, I, I will not support that motion, and so let you know that.
Okay, we got a motion, uh, to approve. Any further discussion?
Dennis, I just would, I, I go back to when I talked, when I asked last, uh, council meeting. So, you say that these are the, the minimum midpoint maximum. I'm not exactly sure, um, like where we're at salary range, so I'm just going to throw this out here, just random numbers. So, if city clerk, if the city clerk is currently at sixty thousand, at their, that's their range that they have right now. What, what are we doing to get them to the, the minimum or the midpoint or the maximum? How many years are we taking to get to that point? Are we just jumping? So, for this one, it would be four thousand three hundred eighteen dollars just to, to go to the minimum. So, how much are we looking at as far as budget on top of the twenty-eight thousand that we already approved? How, what are we looking at as far as additional monies coming out from, from our budget?
None. This is not connected to any money in any way.
So, we're just going to have this as minimum midpoint maximum, but we're not going to move our staff to the minimum midpoint maximum?
The council, the council gave me authorization to use an additional twenty-eight thousand dollars to make salaries and wage levels for next year. So, when I do that, that'll be up to me to decide based on their performance, their experience, their years of service. All of those things will go into my decision as I talk about that with Chad and Dalton, because they're department directors. But what this basically serves, the most important role that this will serve, and a good example will be in the coming months when Chad goes out to fill the fire captain position. He will know and be able to advertise what the pay range is for this position. So, if somebody looks at this and they want to apply and they see that these pay ranges are way below what they would be asking for in terms of a starting salary, then they know not to waste anybody's time, including themselves, applying for a job that they are not going to accept. However, when we plot, when we advertise this, we will advertise the range as sixty-two nine sixty-eight to eighty-eight one fifty-five. And then maybe there's a candidate there that is exceptional, has many years of experience, and Chad would select that candidate and then recommend to me that they play, be placed somewhere along this for very solid reasons. That's how we would be using this pay range. But we are, this is not going to determine, this is not going to require any more change in the budget. That's all said. That's all done.
Yeah, for, for next, for this upcoming budget.
Right, starting July first, right.
Yeah, I understand that, Dennis, and we've already approved the twenty-eight thousand Susan pointed out. So, that takes care of the next year. But I don't, again, my disagreement with is having something that the council doesn't know whether they can deliver on it. For example, this twenty-eight thousand, that is actually a four-point-one percent increase in the total package of salaries. So, I mean, that's pretty, pretty happy compared to other cities that are like three and a half. Now, I'm not arguing that we're low, but I mean, the, the, the council, I think, has approved the four-point-one something percent and gave you the discretion to allocate all in support of our staff. And so, I don't know, and, and I would guess that you don't know what conditions will be next year. And, and so, that's what I, I would rather leave it up to the next council to, um, and they may, they may want to go back to it.
Okay, I think we're, I think we're just not paying attention to last meeting's actions. So,
I think I am.
The council adopted two weeks ago, has a process spelled out every year, and this is how it's going to work. The council will get a budget recommendation from Rochelle that says, here's what the base wage increase is going to be, and it's going to be tied to the ECI. It's about two to two-point-one percent. Then there is a merit bonus, um, program, and that is decided by the council. The council will decide we want to allocate ten thousand dollars to that, and then Chad, Dalton, and I will be the ones that divvy up those bonuses based on the formula that's included in that plan. So, every year the council will have a voice and saying and approving all of these compensation issues. This, this document is nowhere connected to any of that. It will have no impact on the budget. You could vote no on this tonight, and it will have no impact on wages going forward in July first. All it will do is make it impossible for us to fill vacant positions because we don't know what to pay them.
Well, you'll know when you have an open position, you'll figure out the range at that point.
It's, I'm telling you, it's right here to approve. This is the one.
I, I know it's right, according to you, it's right there. That's the part that I'm, I'm not, uh, going to support, and I'm just one, one of the three people here now.
Okay.
Dennis, so back to, to my question. How, how long are you looking at, again, let's, let me pick on the city clerk because it's the first position. So, let's say that the, the clerk is making fifty thousand for easy numbers for me, and now the minimum is sixty-four thousand. What, how long are we looking at to, to get the city clerk to that minimum position or to that minimum level of?
I don't have an established, um, deadline or target or anything like that. I have a certain amount of money that has to be shared among all employees, and first and foremost, I'm looking at experience and performance during the year to reward those employees for that, that experience.
I guess.
I am not looking at this at all.
It's not a time, time oriented or, you know, period of time. If you're three to five years, you're at this range, and at five to seven, you're here. It's not that kind of a deal.
No, I'm, I'm not, I'm not asking that. What I'm saying is, how long will it make, will it take to take the fifteen thousand dollar difference between what the city clerk is currently making now at fifty thousand to what the minimum pontifex minimum is, which is sixty-four thousand three eighteen? So, if there's a fourteen thousand dollar difference between that, what the city clerk is currently making and what pontifex minimum is, how long will it take us to get to that point? Because are, are we looking at?
Zero.
Yes, can I, can I say something on that, Dennis? Is that, that's a moving target, those numbers. They'll change every year.
What numbers will change every year?
Well, based on the economic, uh, indices or the, uh, consumer price indices, those numbers, if that's what they are now, they won't be the same next time.
Yes, they will. These will be changed every two years.
Okay, well, that, that won't be the same two times, two years from now.
I think the, the averages are probably pretty close. I don't know if they're going to be changing that much, but I think, I think Susan's question maybe is if we approve this, I think her question is, is is this binding on, you know, if there are people who are making less than the very, very minimum, is that going to be binding on bringing them up to that minimum?
No. These numbers will change over time because people will get a raise next year. I'm not saying you're not going to use this next year.
These numbers will not change until twenty twenty-three.
But, okay, because it shows, uh, you, for example, if, when you bring in that raw data again, that includes all those various cities and how they got their information. Those are going to stay stable for two years? Those numbers are going to stay?
These are not wages. This is a pay range. This is what, this is what a, this is what a comparable position would make in a range.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Rest of these, rest of these positions.
That range.
I can tell you right now, to answer Susan's question, the city clerk makes more than sixty-four thousand dollars per year. The, the ranges have been reduced by eighty-five percent and twenty percent as the council discussed at their last meeting, just like they discussed. And if you want to approve this, you can. If you don't want to, then you don't have to. It will have no impact on the way wages are set this year.
The ranges will change. When you say they're not going to change, you're not. They will change because people will get raises next year.
Which will not affect this or impact this at all.
So, you're going to keep the raises, these numbers the same over two years?
This will be the same in twenty twenty-two, and it will, I will do another comparison and see if these have to be updated and report to the council to adopt.
That's my point, that's my point, Dennis, because they will be updated, I would assume. So, they'll be updated every year.
I'm lost. I have no idea what's going on right now.
I'm just saying they'll be updated. If you use, if you use the economic in, index, it, it changes every year. Does it not?
It doesn't.
I've said it so many times, this is not going to change for another two years. Does everybody understand that?
Dennis, I totally get that. My, my question was just, how are we going to get the staff members? Because if I was a staff member and I don't have in front of me what our staff are making, so I, I don't know if we are all at the minimums, if we are moving, if we have to add more money. I don't know exactly, I can't pull out what are, what our people are making.
We don't have to add any more money. All the work has been done with that. Last meeting. This is just, it's basically, you're, you're laying out the bones of what these, these positions could make, so that if we have to hire somebody, we can tell them, you're gonna make in this range. But we're going to decide that because we're the employer.
Teresa had comments?
Yes, thank you, and my apologies for just being on the phone. So um as I've been listening, hopefully maybe can shed a little bit of light. So I think Susan, to answer your question, um and maybe provide maybe a little bit different perspective that ultimately it's up Dennis has a decision as a manager to make a decision on how to make those raises or to whether or not to get those people at wherever they fall, even if they're underneath of the minimum range, um each currently, um each year, um the council will decide how much, how many dollars he gets to do that. And then we have entrusted him as a city manager to make that decision on where and how to allocate those dollars. If somebody is under that range, then they, then that's Dennis's decision on whether or not he's gonna put all of the money we've given him to raise somebody up or to spread it out. He's talked about how he'll make those decisions on how to allocate those dollars. Um, I don't think that these ranges necessarily commit us to um bringing the folks into, bringing anybody who might be um below a minimum or below a median. It doesn't commit us to having to get a current staff person into that range that's really up to Dennis based on the dollars that we make available. So I don't know if that makes, is helpful or makes sense. This create, setting this range doesn't um commit council to bringing current staff into that range zone. Dennis, would you agree to, with that statement? I, I mean, because that's how I understand it, and um hopefully that's helpful.
I do, I agree a hundred percent. You've, you've explained it a lot better than I did.
No, I think
Well, I don't know about that, but
I think you explained it clearly too. So
Have anybody below that median hard anyway?
Dennis, did I hear you say that this is mainly just an information item?
This is a guide for us when we have our hiring.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
So essentially an information item, yeah, okay. That's how I see it, Dennis.
Okay, any further discussion on it? If not, we'll do a roll call.
Mike Jones?
Is this our roll call?
Yes.
Yes.
Teresa harms?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
No.
Susan Skiris?
Yes.
Emotion passes. Next item on the agenda is consideration of twenty eighty agreement between the city of Windsor Heights and Central Iowa Water Trails and authorize a physical twenty two funding membership support in the amount of sixty three hundred and thirty six dollars.
So moved.
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hold on, I couldn't get my, my mute button. Can I just ask, so this, just funding the membership and support for this? This does not mean that we will put in one of the access points or anything like that. It just says that we're going to do the basic governance, funding, and project management and give them the six thousand plus for the year. Is that correct?
That's correct. There has been a, there was a project that was identified during this process in Windsor Heights. Um but it was, I think, uh that project was tagged at about a million dollars. But this, the council has not allocated any money or made any decision on such a project.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was not, that if we approved this, that we were not committing ourselves to an access point or anything along those lines. And by doing this, we also aren't committing our public works to go in and clean up the river in that or whatever that is Walnut Creek in that area, correct? Where, this is just membership.
This is membership. There isn't a maintenance agreement there that just talks about, it basically lays out the way it works today. Every municipality is responsible for their own stretch of trailway that's in their jurisdiction. But that would be just continuing what we do today.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Susan Skiris?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Teresa harms?
Yes.
Next item is consideration of participation in the Des Moines Partnership. MDC event and the amount of seventy five hundred. That's the uh trip to DC.
So moved.
Second.
Question. Roll call.
Susan Skiris?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Teresa harms?
Yeah.
Next item is consideration of approval of letter of support, the Windsor Heights Police Department for their ABLE training project.
Second.
Discussion.
Just some quick background on this, um for anybody that's interested. Uh, the ABLE project is acted bystandership uh for law enforcement and uh basically was developed as a, a training curriculum centered around uh teaching officers the processes and um methodology of intervening on behalf of other officers if they see something that they're uncomfortable with. Um it's nation, national, nationally recognized training. Uh will be either the third or fourth agency, I believe, in the state of Iowa to implement this, and there's a bigger project in the metro to implement this across the the entire group. So we're just to have the curve on that, but um in order to get into the program, even through the application, we have to have two letters of support plus a letter of support from our governing bodies. So that's what this is about.
Chad, be- between this, I think, and um I don't know, I don't, the popsicle pop up, is that what it was called?
Up up popsicle project.
Pop up popsicle project. Um, I have to commend you for, you know, your efforts to uh not only reach out to the community, but also as far as um steps you've taken with regards to police reform, even if we're a smaller department. So I, I commend you on that a lot as, as well as bringing this program to our attention.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Susan Skiris?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Teresa harms?
Yeah.
Item is consideration of pay request number ten for University Avenue improvements. The amount of four hundred forty one thousand one hundred and twenty four dollars and some odd cents. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Susan Skiris?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Teresa harms?
Yeah.
Next item is consideration of pay request number eleven, College Drive Improvements. Project in the amount of eighty seven thousand fifteen dollars and twenty five cents. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion of it?
I just, I um was talked to about the grass. That's uh, while I use that term loosely, because I think there's a lot of weeds um on college, and then I'll say the same for Allison. Um, do we know kind of what's going on with, with the way that things look there? Because it looks very weedy, and people who used to have a nice pristine yard now have well, lack, I, I mean, it, there's just a lot of weeds in that area. Um, so do we know kind of what's going on there? Is this something that they're gonna have to fix? Are we fixing this?
Justin's on the line, and he can answer those questions, but I do know that um we will be going back with weed treatment. We just can't do a weed treatment while we're also trying to get the grass to seed. They don't, can't do them at the same time. So we will be going back, and we will be doing weed treatment on a case by case basis. Anything to add there, Justin?
Yeah, unfortunately, we got the, well, we got those two weeks of rains, and after that, it was a drought and heat. So it didn't help with that instance. So once uh we come out of this, and it'll probably be later in the summer when the seeding window bag opens up, they'll be coming back and addressing it. I have the contractor going out to look to see if there's anything we can do to help out, because there were some areas that grew and some areas that didn't, and it was just kind of uh, besides the heat, no rain. We're, I was just wondering why. So we'll probably have to revisit it once the seeding window opens back up.
And Justin, when is the seeding window? When do you consider that?
Ah, I wanna say it is the end of August sometime. I would have to look.
Okay.
Sometimes they change those dates because of the weather, so.
Okay.
Unfortunately, we hit that drought and hot temperatures, so the, just wasn't conducive to growing any grass at that point.
Well, were they doing their regular scheduled watering?
Yeah, they were.
And I know residents were on both college and Allison were also watering um as we asked them to. So I'm kind of, I, I guess I'm confused why they're, I mean, maybe we just got a bad batch of grass. I, I don't know.
You know, that very well could have been, or something happened in, in the meantime where the heat burned it up or something like that, so. Um, Sixty Ninth Street grew well, and that was kind of seeded at the same time as Allison was. So I, that's why I'm having them kind of give me their recommendations of what kind of happened and how we can go from there.
When do you think you'll get those recommendations then, Justin, so we
I was, I was hoping this week.
Okay. Just would like to get ahold of the residents that have contacted me about how their lawn looks to make sure that we let them know where we're at with this process, so that they don't think we're gonna make them deal with weeds for the rest of their time here in Windsor Heights.
Yep, no.
Let me add one, one thing. We got a nice email from uh Mary Beth and, and Dick Craven about how pleased they were with the sidewalk that was installed. So hopefully that gets to the public works people and Dennis and everyone that's worked on that. They are just very happy, so. People happy, right?
Thanks, Mike.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Susan Skiris?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Teresa harms?
Yeah.
Next item is consideration of pay request number twelve. The street improvement project at Allison and Sixty Ninth Street in the amount of seventy seven thousand eight hundred and fifty six and seventy seven cents. Motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Uh what is even left on Allison?
And Allison is just really finishing up the seeding on phase one, two. So most of the Yeah, they have a punch list, so most of the price you'll, or cost you'll be seeing coming up is for Sixty Ninth Street.
That's it. Do you look at all at the uh hydro seeding?
Yep.
We don't do that.
Uh, the contractor sprays that down, so they'll seed and then spray the hydro seeding down afterwards with the um fertilizer in it.
And it's growing really well.
That's, that's why I say it's kind of a, I don't know why some areas have grown and some areas haven't.
Just curious.
Matt, you got your hand up. Go ahead.
I was gonna ask, uh corner of Sixty Fourth and Allison had some pieces replaced because they were cracked. Uh, there's another piece farther down Allison, uh still the sixty four hundred block part of it. Uh, that has a piece that has cracked that was marked with orange paint. Was that getting repaired as well?
Yes, they're gonna seal route, route that out and seal it. They were able to do that since it's a straighter line.
Can I answer your question, Matt?
Yeah, thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Gary, Susan Skiris?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Teresa harms?
Yeah.
Next item is consideration resolution twenty twenty one dash thirty, setting a public hearing for a site plan review.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Question. Dennis, when is that site plan review, public hearing for it?
It is the twenty third. It's the high B um drive-through operation.
Okay, seven twenty three.
Uh, no, actually, Mayor, that's the, the, I'm sorry, Dennis, the twenty third is um the Planning and Zoning Commission will take it up. And then it'll be on for council on the nineteenth of July.
Okay, that's what I was questioning. Thank you.
I'm sorry, that's what I thought you meant, the P and Z meeting. I'm sorry.
No, but that's good to know, too. Okay, any further discussion on that? If not, roll call.
Susan Skiris? Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Teresa harms?
Yeah.
Next item is consideration resolution twenty twenty one dash thirty one. Setting a public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty one oh five, amending chapter fifty five, which is the animal impound fees. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Chad, you wanna, or Dennis?
Yeah, this one's mine also. As you recall, we've uh updated city code to um change the processing methodology for picked up animals recently. Where they go to ARL, part of that was a, a release issued by the city that we were charging a twenty dollar administrative fee for. Um, ARL quickly figured out that that's not a good process on their end. Uh, because people were driving up there to retrieve their animals, didn't have the proper paperwork. Not every community was as open to doing that twenty four seven as we were. So then people had to come back to wherever they live, get with their city offices or whatever to get the release, and it was just a, a huge burden. So ARL is no longer requiring that. Since they're not requiring that, we won't issue them. And if we're not issuing them, it doesn't make any sense to have the twenty dollar administrative fee. And the amount of revenue we were gonna get from that is negligible, uh less than two hundred dollars a year. So uh the problem is, the way that code is written, it says that that administrative fee shall be charged, so I don't have the ability to, to waive it unless we change the code. So this is just to clean that up.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Susan Skiris?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Teresa harms?
Yeah.
Next item are reports. Teresa?
I don't have anything.
Okay, thank you. Mike Jones?
Yeah, we had Bravo last week, the last meeting of the fiscal year, uh announced some projects and investments. The DART bus shelters was already announced last year, but um they once again reaffirm, there'll be a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars for the um shelters from this year, and then a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars from the coming year as well. Nothing else.
Thank you. Michael Fredo?
Yes, sir. Uh, this is really for Dennis, this kind of a question is, do we, are all the central staff working on site?
Do you mean at city hall or?
Yes, at city hall.
No, we have one day a week where staff can work from home.
When was that established?
Oh, long before I came here.
Well, that's news to me. Uh maybe, maybe the rest of the council and mayor are aware of that. So, yeah, that's a new one for me. And, and what was the other one I had? Yeah, I sent an email out to council, Dennis, I didn't send you a copy, but I'd be happy to. Because it really, it's not for you right now. Is that we've neglected as a council to provide an uh evaluation for Dennis. And. You know, it's gonna be past time, obviously. But I think we need to get together in a work session and I, I directed it to uh Mayor Burgess. Because I don't know why the heck it hasn't been done before. And, and as I kind of, I did kind of, I said in the email to him. You know, w- we were in this thing last year, the same, same deal. And, and uh had a year or two. Cleaned the process up and it just. Evaporated and it's all, I guess what I'm saying is it's not fair to the administrator. And it's uh, it, it's, I, I put a few suggestions in there. But I, I don't know what, what the council wants to do with that, but I want you to consider it. Where do we go from here? So that's it. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Michael. I believe that's being considered between uh Dennis, myself, and we'll have further information for council very shortly.
Well, it, it's really, council needs to determine. That, that's, I think that's kind of been reversed, actually, that maybe I'm wrong, but it seems like. Council to determine that Dennis is, works, we're our supervisors are the council members. And evaluators are the council members. So. It just seems a little contrary that you and Dennis are going to establish whatever.
No, we're gonna put something together and send it back out to you folks, so you may either address it or disapprove it or whatever. So just stay tuned, Mike.
Well, I'm, I'm just really disappointed Dave, and you and, and, and the rest of the council that it's been neglected this long. It's really. Um disappointing and it's not fair to the administrator. It's not fair to the citizens. And uh I, I really. I could use a stronger word, but I'm very disappointed in it.
Okay, so thank you. Uh Susan, you got anything to say?
Um movie night at Colby Park on Friday went well. It was well attended. Goonies was the movie. We had about eighty people in attendance. Uh some thank yous to Matt Kell, uh Luisa Dykstra, HW CVD, Eileen's Cookies, Bolton and Mink, City of Windsor Heights. Windsor Heights Foundation, all of the, the above supported the Movies in the Park event. Thank you to Lauren, Edie, Chad, Dennis, Teresa, the Dykstra family. Judy Davis, Barb Fantino, Joseph Jones and Brian with Public Work. Public Works for all of the hard work that they did in helping to make the evening a success by setting up, cleaning up and everything that went on in between. Uh as Edie said, there are two ribbon cuttings this week. And I hope that I, I see a lot of the Windsor Heights staff and some council members at uh the two ribbon cuttings. So Thursday. At four PM dinner dispatch and then ten AM Friday at Jake's Fireworks. That's it.
Susan, would you send a reminder to all of us on that?
Sure.
Uh my memory is not as good, maybe it's yours, but it's pretty good.
I, I use my cellphone, so I can't say my memory is any better than yours.
Okay, okay, we'll just send a reminder where, where they are.
I will.
Okay, thank you.
Dennis? Have you got any further?
In this evening, thank you.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
So moved. And um just real quick, Dennis, I would just say thanks for your Friday reports. I really appreciate them and they're very helpful and I appreciate that they're succinct and timely. So. Appreciate that. Move to adjourn.
Second.
I agree.
Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Mike LaFredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Thank you, folks. Have a good evening.
Thank you.